City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem. Alderman Grover.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, May 9, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. We're going to change the agenda slightly. And City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
No ma'am, I do not.
Thank you very much. And moving right along, City Clerk, do you have communications?
None.
Thank you. And Citizen Comment, we have one citizen signed up to speak, Dan Shapiro. Would you please give your name and address? Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Dan Shapiro. I'm at the law firm at Thompson-Coburn, 55 East Monroe, Chicago. The reason for my appearance before you tonight is to follow up on correspondence I sent to your City Manager not too long ago with regards to 555 Howard. As you may recall, about nine months ago, this body considered and adopted an ordinance for 555 Howard, allowing them hours to operate for the convenience store from 7:00 to 7:00 each day of the week. One part of that ordinance was that there would be a reevaluation or staff memo for a reevaluation after 90 days to look at the effects of those, at that time, expanded hours. There were some minutes that I was provided to, by, from staff, indicating to me that that was really the staff memo, in lieu of a staff memo. And those minutes seemed to be very positive as to the gas station and the operation of the gas station convenience store in particular. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask for your consideration to allow the hours to go from 7:00 to 7:00 to 5:00 to midnight. There have been a number of changes since this matter came before you, and even before it came before you, which have resulted in what I would think are the positive findings or the positive effects since the matter was considered back last summer. My clients have installed video cameras, six cameras. They've removed a phone booth. They have been in collaboration with the chief. They have engaged training. They have been certainly more alert and more responsive. And as a result, I think the minutes speak for themselves. With that, and given the fact that it seemed to me that from the ordinance, there was an intent to reevaluate the hours, certainly after 90 days, we're asking for your consideration to go from 5:00 AM until midnight.
Thank you. I'm sure the City Manager will get back to you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, members of the council, we did receive the request. Mr. Farrar did provide a written response. Did you receive Mr. Farrar's response?
I did, and we exchanged responses to that. One of the points of the response that Grant offered me was, at the time, I believe the city felt that the ordinance had not been recorded. And I have a copy of the recorded ordinance. It was recorded, and it's been provided through staff. And I have another copy if you'd like. It was recorded on July 15 of last year. In addition to that, my response to Grant was more along the line of what I'm saying to you tonight, so I don't have to repeat it again.
All right, great. And just to let the council, no Madam Mayor, that there has been a written response provided.
Thank you very much. That concludes Citizen Comment. I got it. And, did you want to speak?
If, as possible, my mom and I actually wanted to sign up together.
You can have three minutes, and that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Padma Rao. I live at 2246 Sherman Avenue, and I'm speaking regarding the Kendall re-subdivision. My neighbors and I have stated concerns regarding this matter, specifically the plan to needlessly kill over two dozen mature trees and to pointlessly endanger the lives of young children and other pedestrians on Colfax Street. Our concerns are supported by authorities in law, science, ecology, zoning, tax considerations, and logic. This council has adamantly refused to answer any of our questions or to state any reason or basis for ignoring our concerns. One council member stated that the developer's plan is by right, but to this day refuses to point to any legal authority that confers any such alleged right. Instead, according to an article in the Evanston Patch, the same council member was overheard reassuring the developer's lawyer that the decision would be pushed through no matter what. The City Code, Section 413-1 Part B, states in pertinent part, "No such re-subdivision shall be approved by the city council unless it conforms with all the applicable ordinances of the city." One such applicable ordinance is the zoning ordinance, Section 176 of which refers to tree protection, and Section 612 discusses things including traffic safety concerns. The Illinois Municipal Code, which is part of state law, states in part that if a municipality has adopted a subdivision ordinance, then the subdivision shall be submitted for approval and approved in the manner provided in the ordinance. So state law requires that the council must abide by the provisions of the City Code governing subdivisions, which in turn requires the council to deny any re-subdivision that fails to comply with the previously cited provisions of the zoning ordinance. State law does go further and requires that actually data must be provided by the applicant to prove that there is compliance with all applicable city ordinances and regulations. However, there were no data provided regarding traffic safety or to support killing over two dozen trees in this matter. No scientific or ecological studies were ever cited to show compliance with city ordinances or to support this council's decision. Where are the data? There is Illinois case law that supports the position that I have stated. The case is called Brown versus City of Joliet. Now here, the council's decision results in the loss of over two dozen trees that have been part of our community in history. No data have been provided regarding the long-term ecological impact of such an act. This council's decision to allow a dangerous traffic configuration may well result in the loss of life and limb for some of my neighbors. What legitimate reasons could possibly support a decision with such dire and irreversible consequences? I respectfully demand that each and every council member clearly state the specific legal authorities that they relied upon in voting for this decision. I further respectfully demand that each and every council member produce the data that they relied upon to determine compliance with the traffic safety and tree protection provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, your three minutes are up.
Can I just say one last thing?
One last thing.
Thank you. The council's continued refusal to disclose any information in this regard raises the presumption that the information either doesn't exist or doesn't support this council's decision. And the implication of that presumption is that each and every council member's vote for this plan is a breach of their fiduciary obligation to the city and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude public comments. Next is the Mayor's Proclamations and Public Announcements. And I am very excited to be able to present a key to the city to Ray Klingensmith, an attorney from Kirksville, Missouri, who took office as President of Rotary International on the 1st of July, 2010. Come on up. And I get to talk about you. You have to just stand and face the audience for a while. As President, he leads a global network of 1.2 million business and professional leaders who through volunteer service help meet the needs of communities worldwide. During his one-year term as President, Klingensmith has encouraged Rotary's 33,000 clubs to partner with local governments and non-governmental organizations to initiate projects that improve literacy rates and provide sustainable sources of food and clean water to communities in developing countries. He also oversees Rotary's top priority of eradicating polio, a crippling and potentially fatal disease that still threatens children in Africa and Asia. Since 1985, Rotary Club members worldwide have contributed more than $800 million and countless volunteer hours to the effort, and are now working aggressively to raise an additional $200 million to match a $355 million challenge grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Great progress has been made, and the incidence of polio infection has plunged from about 350,000 cases in 1988 to fewer than 2,000 in 2008. Rotary also sponsors the largest privately-funded international scholarship program in the world. Since 1947, Rotary has contributed roughly $500 million to fund 38,000 students from 100 countries. These cultural ambassadors use the skills they acquire through their studies abroad to help their communities. Klingensmith was one of these cultural ambassadors in 1961 when he studied at the University of Cape Town as a Rotary Foundation Ambassadorial Scholar. Among member of Rotary for more than 40 years, he is currently a member of the Kirksville Rotary Club. Been a little hard making all those meetings this year, I would think. And we are very proud and grateful that Rotary's home is in Evanston.
You know, I did some research on why Rotary chose Evanston back in 1952. And at that time, the city of Evanston was known as the city of association. There were several at that time. Now we're only one or two left, but we're very proud to be there. Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Our pleasure. Next, Ed Fuda. Where is Mr. Fuda? There he is. Joined the Rotary International staff in November of 1998 as the manager of strategic planning for the Secretariat. He came to Rotary from Hawaii, where he was president of an international marketing consulting firm, active in youth ministry. He also served on the Board of Governors of the YMCA and as a mediator in the Neighborhood Justice Center of Honolulu. Ed was appointed General Secretary of Rotary International in July 2000. For the past 11 years, he has been responsible for the day-to-day management of 550 employees at Rotary International Headquarters here in Evanston, and well, as well as staff in seven international offices. He is credited with keeping Rotary International on strong footing through difficult economic times. He is focused on strategic planning and Rotary's future vision plan, which looks at the organization's preparation for life after polio eradication is complete. It's a wonderful goal. His term as General Secretary has also been marked by cultivating new partnerships with organizations, including USAID and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. A Rotarian since 1979, Ed is a member of the Rotary Club of East Honolulu. He has served Rotary International as District Governor, Group Discussion Leader, Committee Member, Rotary Foundation Regional Coordinator, and Rotary International President's Representative to numerous district conferences. And I would like to give you the City of Evanston Extraordinary Service Award. We are going to miss you. I have two more announcements. It is National Preservation Month in May, and Evanston Police Appreciation Day will be May 11, 2011. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, on our consent agendas, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 25, 2011. Administration Public Works Committee requests your approval of the payroll through April 24 in the amount of $2,467,845.34. The City of Evanston bills need to be approved through, for 2011 through May 10, in the amount of $2,267,675.59. We request your approval also of the credit card bills through March 31 in the amount of $119,392.78. The committee recommends council approval of the renewal agreement for the 2011 Summer Food Program to open kitchens in the not to exceed amount of $2.3197 per lunch. $78,000 is budgeted in the business unit for the cost of the lunches. This is a reimbursement program in which the total amount of reimbursement the city will receive is dependent upon the number of lunches served. Next, approval is requested for the 2011 Parking Lot 60 Repair Project to J. Gill and Company in the amount of $76,020. Excuse me, I wasn't quite ready here. Next, approval of a contract award is requested for the 2011 Sherman Plaza Parking Garage Gap Repair Project to G.A. Johnson &amp; Son of Evanston in the amount of $76,330. This is for action. Approval is also requested for a contract award for the Dodge Avenue Resurfacing Project, Oakton Street to Lee Street, to Arrow Road Construction in the amount of $697,435.65. We also request your approval of an agreement to provide design bill services for the Evanston Water Utility Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System Upgrades, SCADA, to Allen Integrated Control Systems, Inc., in the not to exceed amount of $1,649,642. The city applied for and received a grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $350,000. The water fund will pay the balance. We request your approval also of Resolution 26R11, which authorizes a lease agreement by and between the City of Evanston and Workforce Board of Northern Cook County Nonprofit Corporation for the lease of a computer lab in the main library. The rent will be $17,400 a year, and the term will be from May 15, 2011 through May 14, 2012. We also request your approval of Resolution 30R11, which authorizes the execution of a lease agreement by and between the City of Evanston and Foundation 65, a nonprofit corporation for office space in the main library. The lease will be for a three-year term, May 15, 2011 through May 14, 2014, and leased at a rental rate of $5,000 per year, $416.67 per month. Next, I figured. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 32011, which includes the reduced sale price of $770,85 for the city property in the 700 block of Chicago Avenue due to current market conditions and the substantial change in property valuation. There is, Amley anticipates proceeding with construction in 2011, subject to private financing approval. They have been pursuing all sorts of activities with the city in multiple departments and are moving forward, according to the developer. Ordinance 27011 is for action, and that has to do with the sale of surplus property through Obenoff Auction. These are vehicles and equipment are presently out of service. This was introduced at our last meeting. Next, under Planning and Development, the committee has reviewed and requests your approval for a sidewalk cafe for Rowing Sushi Bar, 1930 Central Street. Next, we request your approval of a sidewalk cafe for Castile Coffee, 2924 Central Street. And that applicant is requesting an exemption from reusable flatware, dishware, and beverage containers. Next, approval for a sidewalk cafe for Other Brother Coffee House at 1549 Sherman Avenue. In this case, the applicant is also asking the city to waive the requirement that dishware be reusable. Next, Ordinance 31011, amend Section 413-1 of the City Code, approval of Platts. Approval is recommended for these amendments to the City Code associated with the city council's approval of subdivision of Platts. This is to ensure that all Platt approvals conform with all applicable ordinances of the city, and to also be assured of the construction and sequencing of the infrastructure necessary to support the proposed subdivisions. Next, under Human Services, approval of the Township of Evanston Bills, 2011. The Human Services Committee recommends your approval of those bills in the amount of $104,580.45. The next item, Madam Mayor and council, is scheduled for approval but is really for introduction. And so I'm going to move introduction unless anybody has any objections. Did you want to amend this? I can take it off if you want. Okay. But I think amendments should be made at Human Services, maybe?
That's fine.
Will Human Services meet before this item comes back? No? Okay, then we need to do it. Either here or next time.
Next time's fine.
Next time? Okay. Ordinance 34011 is a farmer's market ordinance amendment. The report indicates that there's, approval is recommended for introduction, having to do with business regulations, City Code, related to the farmer's market. And I know that Alderman Burris has an amendment to make, and we'll do so at our next meeting. Next, under Economic Development Committee. I can take it off. Why don't I, since we've raised this and it seems confusing, I'm going to remove, forget what I said about Ordinance 34011. I'm removing it from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Economic Development Committee, our staff is recommending approval, and the committee agrees, to revise the Neighborhood Business District Improvement Grant Program, renaming it Evanston's Great Merchants Grant. This is for utilization and the annual allocation of funds for Evanston Business Districts for the remainder of the 2011 fiscal year. Funding is recommended to come from the Business District Improvement Fund. In 2012, the recommendation is that proposed funding would be from the Economic Development Fund. With that, Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is complete. I move approval.
Second. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem. Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
It's nothing the consent agenda passes. All right, Alderman Tendem is the Chair of Humans. Alderman Grover, would you be the Chair of Human Services?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Human Services Committee recommends approval of Ordinance 34-0-11, amending our farmer's market ordinance. We had a long discussion at Human Services last week, and the committee reaffirmed our commitment to health inspections and for the fees associated with the health inspections. Had a discussion specific to that. But I'm moving it for introduction.
You are?
Yes.
Alderman Burris.
And my comments about the fee is, Ridgeville Park District is having some real issues with the farmer's market fees. Our vendors may not be coming back because of the fee that is associated. So if there's a way to do it differently, maybe it's a group inspection for some of the vendors. It's a serious problem, and I've asked them to also directly, the vendors, as well as the Ridgeville Park District Boards, to reach out to you individually, and hopefully they'll be at the next meeting. They couldn't be here this evening. But my fear is that these fees, I realize that we have to do the health inspections, but these fees are a serious problem for our vendors, and it may make some of these farmer's markets go away, and I think that will hurt us long-term. So if we can find another way to do this to not be as detrimental to our vendors, that would be great.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I had no idea what you were going to do. I was going to do it at Call of the Wards, but I couldn't agree more. This is another governmental unit, Ridgeville Park District. And there seems to be an increased interest in middle-of-the-week farmer's markets in Evanston. We continue to talk about local foods, and we can't price Ridgeville out of the market. And so I was going to ask that, given that the fee is $225, that we consider waiving the fee for governmental units.
Alderman Holmes?
I think one of the things that we have to make really clear is that each market has their own fee schedule in terms of what they charge for the vendors. I think Alderman Burris is speaking in particular about health inspection fees, which would only come into play if someone wanted to prepare food at the market, if I'm not mistaken. So we would need to know, I think, a little bit more information in terms of how many vendors that really, you know, how many vendors there really are that need to do that, because it doesn't affect having vendors, because Ridgeville, like the other markets, would control how much they want to charge for their vendors to be at the market. But if they want to sell food at the market, then that is when the health inspectors, I mean, prepare food, not sell, prepare food at the market. That's when the health inspections come into play. And it really is a public health issue in terms of making sure that everything is safe, which we've had a little bit of discussion about that. And we did have a long discussion about it at the Human Services Committee in terms of how, the importance of that. I think that Alderman Burris has a great idea in terms of maybe some kind of joint group fee at the beginning, you know, that everyone can sort of chip in and pay for one inspection. The only thing is if they have to come back, because depending upon what the food is, sometimes the inspectors need to come back, you know, maybe several times during the day just to check to make sure that the foods are still okay. So it's going to warrant, I think, another discussion.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I spoke at the Human Services specifically on this point. I've received requests from every farmer's market to waive health fees. We're currently looking at four. There's, in addition to the Ridge bill, there's a group and organization on Central Street. Alderman Holmes raised the issue of the West Side Market and how they have been very critical of those fees because of the impact that it has on their market. Mr. Gaynor and Parks and Rec Department manage the main market in downtown. They regularly hear from vendors. So my quandary, as your City Manager, is which fees to waive, because everyone would like their health inspection fees to waive. And the Health Department has their budget based, in part, on the fees that are taken in for the work that their staff does. So we're in a little bit of a quandary here. I think everyone's in agreement that the inspections are important and appropriate. It's just a matter of how to pay for them. So I had asked the committee for some direction at the discussion, and the committee's feeling was... 325-3 says that the applicable yearly or daily spasemental fees shall be determined annually by the city. So it doesn't really set the fees, it just provides that the city will set the fees. So I don't see any reason not to move forward with the ordinance itself.
Well, it's just being introduced, so.
Right.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification on the fees. During the, in between AP&amp;W and P&amp;D, I was actually speaking to one of the vendors at Ridgeville, and she prepares her cookies at a synagogue here in Evanston that does a health inspection. They have a health inspection. So she prepares her cookies there, then brings them to the farmer's market, and then has charged another $103 for a health inspection for basically just having her cookies that are already wrapped in place. So, and the health inspector just comes to the, doesn't come to your home, doesn't go to the synagogue, it's already been, the inspection's already been done. So it seems like we're charging extra money for what exactly? And that's the kind of thing, that's pricing people out of coming to the farmer's market. So I'm hopefully trying to encourage her to talk at the next meeting, or to send you an email exactly about, that's not preparing food on-site. Why do we have that extra additional fee? So we really need to look at this.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I was going to ask, exactly what do you get for a $225 seasonal food permit?
Alderman Rainey, since the issue of the permit fees was not a part of the ordinance, specifically the Health Department staff is not here, Mr. Gainer's here, he may be able to speak, but we'd be happy to come back as part of the return with the ordinance next month with a report from our Health Department with the specifics and address Alderman Burris's questions.
The only concern I have about that is the farmer's markets will be in full-blown, you know, action by then. I really would like to know in the next couple of days what 225 summer food permit fee is.
And Mr. Gainer can provide some information. Again, Ms. Thomas had information at the committee, so we can make that available to the full council, but Mr. Gainer can probably shed some light on the particulars.
Yes, Doug Gainer, Director of Parks Recreation Community Services, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As the City Manager indicated, Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, myself, and Ivana Thomas have met with our staffs to try to come up with some resolution to the issue of the Health Department inspection fees. As I understand it, the fees cover the cost of the inspectors who are coming out each time there is a market. So for instance, in the downtown market, they are coming out every Saturday and inspecting whatever foods the Health Department is required to inspect. So anything that comes on-site at the downtown farmer's market, we have an inspection that is conducted by one of the inspectors out of the Health Department. So the 220, I think it's 223 and maybe $225 fee is for the entire year, and there are 27 Saturdays that the downtown market has. So as I understand it, when Ivana showed us the numbers, it made sense that it was covering her costs for that market. I'm not sure about the west side, West End Market, but I think it's the same situation. If it's a group that comes in, for instance, five or six times during the year, then the fee comes down to about $103. But it does cover the cost each time an inspector is required to come out. And if the food is prepared in a church, or a synagogue, or in a school, it's still, as I understand it, once it reaches a site, still needs to be inspected. So, and I can't really respond too much further than that on the inspection part.
And I believe, Mr. Gainer, members of the council, the inspection is not the food preparation at that point. It is how the food is presented to the community, how it is stored. I believe there has to be, with those kind of prepared goods, has to be covered in some way. So that is what is being looked at. It is not overseeing the actual preparation, it's the presentation. As you know, this year we have had at least one very notable occasion where food was prepared at a licensed restaurant, was made available at a school, and dozens of people were fell ill because the food was not presented for consumption appropriately. So again, I'm your happy City Manager, not your Health Director, so I believe Ms. Thomas can give a more complete explanation. But for those foods that are prepared off-site, it is not the preparation that's being inspection, it is the preservation and presentation of it. There are responsibilities, and that's what occurs. It has been occurring in the downtown market for as long as we've done it, and as Alderman Holmes has indicated, has been done in the past.
And they have to list the ingredients and making sure that the packaging is correct.
And I think, as I recall from Bike the Ridge, where we have waived the fees, because it is a city event, I think that was one of the issues, even though the fee was waived, I think the ingredients of some of the cookies that were prepared, Alderman Rainey helped me remember, I think it was by either an elementary school or middle school.
Oakton.
That they had to disclose nuts and the various ingredients that were there. So our Health Department staff is enforcing local and state health codes. There's a cost associated with that. I would be happy to direct the Health Department to not impose the fee for Ridgeville for their first markets until this item comes back to the council. If the council provides additional direction as to either the city not waiving the fee or using different funds to cover the fee, fine, but we would not want this delay of two weeks to anyway hold up the fair at Ridgeville, with the understanding that the council has multiple options before it, and they may choose to leave the fee as is, and that fee would then still need to be paid. Would that satisfy Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris's concerns? And we'll come back, again, Ms. Thomas had a full report on what other communities charge, about what they're charging for at committee. We left the issue when the committee gave a very strong direction that is contrary to, it looks like, the full council's opinion on this. So we tried to be proactive, and this is just a case of the committee feeling a little bit differently than at least some of the members of the full council.
Alderman Rainey and Alderman Burris, I have you both down to speak. Are you all right with that?
Madam Mayor, I think I would like to second the introduction of this. I don't think it got a second.
I did, I seconded.
You did? Okay. So we need to vote on it.
It's been moved and seconded. It's an ordinance, okay. Let's vote on the introduction then. City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Eight to nothing, the ordinance passes.
It's introduced.
Well, it's introduced, sorry about that. It does not pass yet. All right, that concludes the meeting. We're at Call of the Wards. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only have one report to give, and that is, the Brummel Park Neighbors held a beauty contest for cleanup and plantings and tidiness of the entire neighborhood, from Ridge to Clyde, from Howard to the Trex. And I was the very impartial judge, and it took me over two hours to make the rounds of all the streets and properties. And I, at the end, declared that really any one of the blocks could have won, anyone. They were just spotless. There was a standout, however, and as I explained to people at a meeting, for me to say this, and Peter Braithwaite probably knows, for me to say this maybe 10 years ago, people would have probably thought I had lost my mind. But for the second year in the row, the 100 block of Clyde won the most perfect block. So congratulations to all those hard workers over on Clyde, but the neighborhood looked amazing. And then I drove around some of the wards, and I'd be willing to conduct a throw-down with any of you for your neighborhood, because our neighborhood just shines. So thank you, and thank you to all the people on Clyde and Brummel Park Neighbors.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I'd like to make a referral to AP&amp;W to consider weight limits, truck weight limits on Oakton, east of Dodge, and on Church Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
First thing I want to announce is May 20th and 21st, Business.
Thank you. The West End Business Association is hosting an outdoor festival, Making It Happen. I'm really proud and excited. I mean, they've been able to pull this together in the last several months, and I think it's going to be a wonderful event, so you're all welcome to attend. There's more information on the City of Evanston website. Again, that's Friday, May 20th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then Saturday, May 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and I believe the mayor is going to be there at some point on Saturday. So you're all welcome. And then the other event is going to be May 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00. It is the Second Ward Meet and Greet, and we're going to host it at Panino's, and that information will be on the website as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a reference to, well, maybe it's P&amp;D, but it's to the staff. There's been a situation that's come up in the Third Ward, and I'm sure it could occur anywhere in the city. We have, we're in the historic district most of the Third Ward, and we have an addition that's being built on a house in the Third Ward. And of course, being Evanston, the properties immediately adjacent are not on standard lots, so because of years ago being subdivided. Because this new addition meets our zoning requirements and went through historic preservation, it didn't require notice to the community at all, notice to the neighbors, doesn't. And I would like to make a reference that, at least for the start, and I think we should look ahead towards this, that any type of addition to a structure in the historic district, neighbors within 200 feet should have notice. This would have been very, very helpful to the community, where I've had a lot of questions about the addition that's being built. And I'd like to also ask the staff, the zoning department, to look at the zoning ordinance and come out to the site and visit it with me so that we could figure out if there is some way in which we can rewrite or add something to the zoning ordinance so that when you have what we have in Evanston, because we're an old-built city, unusual lots, so that one person, you know, years ago, no one really paid much attention to what the lot size was. Now, when something new is built, it significantly impacts neighboring property. I don't want to crimp anyone's ability to use their property appropriately, but I think perhaps there must be some way in which we can permit or urge some kind of site review when you have a situation that's similar to what exists right now in the Third Ward. So those are my references, and I'm sure the staff will be calling me and asking me to provide more information, and I will. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things, please. One is congratulations and thank you to Don Baker, longtime executive director of YOU who is retiring. And I remember talking to him years ago about his succession plan, and I think it's in place, so congratulations to Don, and thank you for all he's done for Evanston. Second, congratulations to the Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary, which this week will rededicate, re-consecrate Loader Hall, which is one of its dormitories in the student center. This is the seminary embedded within Northwestern, just east of Sheridan. They've renovated one of their dormitories to lead certification, and that will happen this week. Really beautiful space.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you.
Alderman Holmes?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things, please. One is congratulations and thank you to Don Baker, longtime executive director of YOU who is retiring. And I remember talking to him years ago about his succession plan, and I think it's in place, so congratulations to Don, and thank you for all he's done for Evanston. Second, congratulations to the Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary, which this week will rededicate, re-consecrate Loader Hall, which is one of its dormitories in the student center. This is the seminary embedded within Northwestern, just east of Sheridan. They've renovated one of their dormitories to lead certification, and that will happen this week. Really beautiful space.
Thank you. Alderman Grover? Alderman Wilson? Did you have a motion to make?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, real estate litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
Is there a second? Thank you. City Clerk?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Alderman Grover?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.